From last night to the budget this morning. As always, we'll start our meeting now. You must be in prayer. Mr. Cohen, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you, Lord's Prayer. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day that you've given us. God, we thank you, Lord, for your blessings upon us and upon our community. Lord, we pray today, God, that you give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for our community and lead us in the way we should go. And, Lord, we just ask that you continue to have your hand upon our community and heal our land, Lord, and be with us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
She has to read some quick.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get to this number?
Twenty-eight, I believe, the book.
I think we left off discussing that we reached her. Now, our first.
Last time I remember, we said we'd come back to.
Yeah, I think, Lauren, didn't you say you wanted to do something with fair?
Well, I just thought it'd be good to discuss it again.
Yeah.
Depending on how we, what we were thinking about this.
If you want to, we'll just get down to him and come back to him.
Request for five thousand come in.
So they did get a request in?
We did.
It's, um, Sir Cap, five thousand and, uh, no, 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 that's me, I'm sorry. No, uh, we're down to the county fair, don't have anything, and then next thing down here, five thousand. We got, um...
The last stock we came in after was that last?
The county fair asked for ten thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, it, it came in after we had, uh...
Oh, okay.
...printed your budgets. And so when, when it did come in, it was ten thousand, and Terry recommended five.
Oh, they asked for ten?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Nineteen, we gave them three. I understand that, right? Yeah, because they didn't get a request in last week.
Right.
The county legislature would reckon it would be five. Did everybody get a copy of the request letter?
Probably gave it to you later.
I'll pull that one again. Thank you.
It's, uh...
Section fifty-two, I think.
There's so much going on, I can't remember.
That's the jail, the name.
No, we're all met here, don't...
Huh? Yeah, small business development. Should be right up there.
They come in as one of those...
We might need to have copies mid.
I missed it.
All good. Wondering, after we go through it one time, we might have to look through all this again.
In my book, they're number sixty-seven. They were the very last thing returning.
Hold on, Terry.
We'll all remember.
That's square, baby, I said.
No, I still don't have it. I just have sixty-five. What was sixty-six?
Sixty-six is...
It must have forty or eighty or something.
Uh, New River Mount Rogers.
I usually don't get it, but it must have.
I don't have that one either.
I took forty-nine instead of...
Last thing I got.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Well, I love, you get my whole couple breaking the bats out, that's when you finally get more drivers.
Well, she's making a copy of, uh, the fair. Oh, but yeah, sixty-six and sixty-seven, yeah.
The drivers should be green, like, they're growing in that heat in there.
Yeah, I don't have that at all.
You can get some of them. That's why I guess, I've got all those tons, so...
Yeah, yeah. What's that?
That's the only thing I got.
That's what it is, what you found.
That's not it.
That's what we got.
For what?
The New River Mount Rogers.
Right, yeah, that's the only, like, we all have, the county fair thing.
Okay, yeah, Terry's coming in.
What is your New River? Yeah, we got that, I got that.
Okay, that's what we got.
I got that.
I think.
I thought I had the fair. Guess I dreamed that.
Thank you.
Yours.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
I think this doesn't really make clear if food's actually involved in the fair. Now, I know that tourism kind of pulled out just because we stretched pretty thin, not because we didn't support the fair, I just... I guess, I assume Farm Bureau's still involved.
Yes.
Extension.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say Farm Bureau Women and, well, Farm Bureau's Women's Committee and Chantilly, the two, I mean.
Do we know who our other coordinator is? She says she's co-coordinator.
I have one. Do we have a perfect, maybe nauseating...
I'll drag your shell out, turn the meeting back over to Terry. Still talking about the fair.
Still talking about the fair. I gotta step up just a second, I'll find the floor here, I'll be back. Now? Do you think you'll be able to handle one of these here?
Everything's supposed to be okay by Easter.
Can you, can you... Can we do a thing on the fund stuff, on the contingency, if it's operational, if we have the funding, funds?
No.
Yeah, I'm not, if, if we, I mean, if things are bad, I think it would be positive for the community.
Absolutely.
After everybody's been... But if it, this thing continues, or flares back up in the fall, and we likely could use the funding elsewhere.
Yep.
I don't know if there was any way, given the situation.
We can leave it in there, and then when we do the appropriations, we could not appropriate, you know, we did with...
You're right, just hope we have a...
Shell building and stuff?
Have a good vision.
Well, I mean, if we could withhold it, and if it doesn't look like it's going to take off, then we just don't approve the appropriation, it stays anyway.
I mean, it's looking ahead ninety days to when we'd have to appropriate. So, I mean, if we were to meet on June the thirtieth, to appropriate everything for July one?
I'm sure we'd have a little better idea than what we do now.
You know, I just, I...
Even in July one, we wouldn't necessarily have to include it in the appro, we can withhold appropriations.
Yeah, right.
Even though we've got a budget there.
Until the day, correct.
And, and, you know, we can wait till the first August to do certain appropriations for those kind of events or activities until we see if they're going to take place.
Even the first of September, I mean...
Well, if we had to, yeah, that might...
That might be cutting it close for this, but...
It might crunch it a little bit.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna go back on record as saying, I really want the county to really embrace a county fair. I don't know if this is the exact one to embrace, but I do want to support it. I think Justin, your comments are really right on in terms of if things have quelled somewhat, that having a fair like this would be something really good for the county and its citizens.
If it's over with, it's again something to look forward to.
I'm all right with Terry, I'm sure he's...
Given our austerity situation right now, I would probably say twenty-five hundred. Would you review your, in light of what's going on, Terry, would you, uh, would you still save five thousand dollars for it?
I have any problem with twenty-five.
I'm all right. Or, you know, maybe just try to be mindful of what we talked about, and remember that in our appropriations, if things continue on a frightening path, and we can only appropriate twenty-five hundred, but I'm not, I'm not stuck at your place, so, whatever the majority wants.
That may not be a bad idea, put twenty-five, and then, you know, if, if this breaks and we're on the path, we can always add more to the, I mean, if we wanted to add a couple thousand dollars, we could do that.
I guess, for me, I'd probably, just so we know where we're headed with the budget, I'd probably lean more towards...
Let's do it with...
Yeah, do, do five, and then just, I agree that if we don't appropriate twenty-five, that way, we're kind of prepared, you know what I'm saying? But, either way, I can carry their weight.
I see what you're saying, you know, the budget's safe, just leave it at five, and then when we get there, if we got it, we give it to them, you know?
Obviously, we turn them around, we're conversant.
We'll be looking at these numbers hard.
I'm just afraid if you do that, they're going to expect...
Right, that's wise, too. I'm all right, we just...
Twenty-five, and then up it if we, yeah.
Things look better.
I'd like to support them, I just, I don't have a very clear, um, idea of exactly what's going to be happening there either.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like I said, I would love to see us really take on a county fair, but given our circumstances at the moment, that's a discussion for another year.
If this thing blows over, next year, we may have something to celebrate, and we can have a field fair.
I mean, just with all the agriculture in this community, in our county, it really would be, I mean, you've heard me talk about old fairs that I went to, just, they were, they were the light of my summer, and the kid from a concrete jungle. They were. It wasn't so much a jungle, actually.
The next item, what?
Sir Cap?
Sir Cap asked for five thousand, I didn't recommend anything. They are working with us through FISH, but that's a different pot of money.
And the grant, right?
The grant, yes.
Right.
I didn't recommend any of those directly.
Okay.
American Legion, I think we have that.
What was their, um...
You know, when I talked to them last year about it, they were using it for the, uh, Christmas, for Christmas, what they do, program for what it is and what it is.
Oh, yeah, 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 right. Absolutely.
I'm familiar with it just because some people in my life have been involved. First of all, they, you know, have been involved in helping with that program, and then in someone past, were a recipient, so, you know, it's a good program.
Yep.
You know, I didn't look forward to that, even though they got stuff.
Yeah.
They still look forward to that now.
It's, they're still part of it.
Yeah, yep.
Want to go with their request?
Yeah.
Yeah.
River Valley Rail, that's our share. Consortium is working on that. It's like the station to get the rail into the valley. New River Mount Rogers, that's the new request this year. I gave you all the work on that. Support Business Services this year. This is a match for one of the grants that you received.
Talked about that all day. See, I was trying to remember what, what we discussed, what they did until I got on their business.
Yeah, I was like, why?
And, uh, you know, since I've been on board, I was able to tune the reachman jail in on some of their stuff, and also, um, drug court, you know, if you're gonna get it, so, and that was very typical of you, the GFCM.
Yeah. So this is a matching grant, you said?
Yes.
Well, tell you what, workforce development is probably going to be at the forefront.
Yeah, I think that's pretty important.
Yep, so I'd say, I'm in agreement.
You know, depends on how this thing's going to go.
Yep.
That's a good career, too, and, uh, I've got good leadership.
Fully counted numbers and, uh, there come in some... I didn't make it. I made it. I made it.
The next section is for cooperative extension. Much of an increase there. Of course, we, we pay about a third of the three agents' salaries, and they have two part-time staff that we pay for. Few supplies.
Are they working from home now?
I'm not sure. I talked to Dawn this week.
I don't see anything there.
Nope.
Didn't change much.
No. Just the, just the raises that we've seen elsewhere, right? That's the only real change. I'm good with moving that total over. I think more than ever, extension is going to be important, I've seen a number of posts coming out that have been very helpful.
Of course, that may go down a little bit, the state changed the way they're going to do the, um, raises for state staff. They get a two percent bonus in December, and then a three percent raise July one next year. But you changed all on the higher side, right?
I did.
On our...
Our constitutional office.
Our constitutional officers, we've changed those.
So that'll be different, we'll hook some here.
Yes.
What's on the screen will be red.
Got it.
I haven't changed...
So we haven't changed extension?
And I haven't changed DSS because Chad told me that's still in flux, and I didn't change registrar's office. I don't... Yeah, I think I mentioned registrar, I have to look.
So will this necessarily be going up?
It should go down some.
Down, okay.
But then the revenues will be going down, too. Because if we're paying less, they'll be getting less from the...
State.
Yeah. Not for extension.
Not for extension.
We don't get the right money for these.
No, she's talking about the other.
Yeah.
Right.
There's an action over here, yeah.
Long good with extension?
Yeah, I don't see anything to do there.
Oh, I'm good.
You know, next.
This is really worries me because if we lose three of them, and we're, we're, yep, a couple of them get sick, or three of them get sick, and...
Protecting them as much as we can.
We're just watching these, you know, so now, there's, there's a lot of them cause, you know, problems with, they run the data.
Yep.
And a lot of them repeat. We talked about the ambulance potentially maybe taking all in after, but we're still considering that.
That's just the full amount that I've got in there.
Yeah, that's what I told them.
Right. Our rescue committee, they did recommend, um, that replacement, our equipment committee.
And that was a replacement of the nineteen ninety-one, not the sixty-nine.
No, this is for EMS.
Oh, 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 this, I thought you were moving the...
Yeah, I was like, what?
We'll get to that here.
It's coming.
That one's coming somewhere.
Thought we were talking about it.
Talked about that one, yeah.
It's all different. Yeah, and also...
Yeah, really.
Justin brought up that the salaries are different, and that's because Philip had a request for two EMS workers, and then he talked about doing one EMS worker and administrative support staff.
I was getting there, yeah.
I, uh, seen that, I was just curious, a lot of numbers is different on my...
He's really looked at his complete organization, and he, there's just so much paperwork and so much, um, he just really needs some help. The assistant manager does a lot of it, but, you know, he's still running calls, too, you know, so, he did, if you all would consider just hiring one more EMS staff person, you know, ALS.
That would probably free up faculty, or run some more service calls to help out, I guess, when he was...
And he still does that, too.
Yeah, he does, I know.
And we thought also, you know, we only have one staff member that does all the billing, nobody else knows how to do it, so, you know, if something happens to her, we thought this person could be trained as backup for that, too.
Yeah.
So is that reflected in the six ninety-eight?
No. It is? So I'm looking at a seven-ten, eight-sixty.
Yes.
What's on the screen is revised number.
Okay.
Oh, that's good. Anytime they go down.
Can we rise it a couple more times?
Yeah.
Yeah. How many more pages do you need to hire?
So what's the bottom line number then?
Clipper fresh, one more.
Yeah.
Just so I have the bottom.
And he would like for you all to consider that, if you would.
So this person, if I understood right, they'll also be able to, hands are called right, I mean, just to support staff, just support...
Support staff.
Administrative assistant type person, correct?
I thought you said something about ALS.
The other position would be an ALS.
One, four, three, six.
If you're targeting people, one would be a clerical.
Clerical, one would be...
One, four, three, six.
But we would hope they would have some medical knowledge, you know, like medical transcription or that type of thing, to be able to make sense of the paperwork.
All right, so what did you cut that you felt was extraneous in here?
The change on the salary.
Was that it?
One number you came up with, Mike.
One, four, three, six.
I know, I mean, the department head's request was for one-four-three-nine-nine-six-five, and Terry's recommendation is one-four-three-six-two-one-five.
Drop the travel and a little bit of the training.
Right. Uniforms went down by a thousand. Office supplies.
And in the past, if you look at eighteen to nineteen, when we added, added personnel, we dropped the flex times, is that any possibility of that, or is that, we just need additional people?
We really do, it seems like. We hope that can drop, but you'll notice also that I had paid their overtime every month, that third line.
Yep, yep.
It's just such a hard position to be in, because you don't, a call may go off twenty minutes before they do your shift, and then rack on for three hours, and the transport times are just...
And the transport times are just ridiculous.
Yeah, where we...
Where we're at.
Where we changed that schedule, you know, there, we have a extra four hours a week in there to play with.
Yeah.
But that still might not be enough.
Like you said, depends on when the call comes in.
You have a call from Willis, they may, they may leave the station and be on scene while they're supposed to be getting off work and then have to transport to Roanoke if that's where their doctor...
And that could turn into a five hour, yeah.
I spent all night doing stuff before just because, you know, you get on a scene of an accident, something, you got an accident. It's just, well, in our locality, there's just no quick way to get anywhere.
Well, this is...
Hoping if we can pay the overtime, you know, monthly, that that would keep someone who has four and five hundred hours of overtime.
Four hours.
And, you know, we can't get off, you know, take the time off.
So you need the flex time and the additional staff just to alleviate that a little bit.
Well...
You know, we really wanted to pay that down before we started paying monthly, but, um, that we'll be able to.
It's a really, really needed service.
Absolutely. And as our community continues to age and given our circumstances at the moment, I'm okay with going with the county administrator's recommendation. I mean, I think, I see this, I think we're gonna have to be talking about this part of our budget for years to come.
Do this EMS, just like with all enforcement, everything else, they're struggling to get people to work. And they're struggling to answer the calls and keep everything...
Yeah.
I mean, it's having the demands not continue to go up, just like the law, for sure.
Yep.
The ambulance that we're talking about may have to replace one of the boxes in six months. That's not in this.
It's not.
Do you remember what the estimated cost of that was?
A few years ago, I was on it, it was around nine thousand per chest. Probably went up to six thousand.
So the box needs to be replaced, not the whole?
Well, we're, we're taking one out. Then we're gonna take the one that has, the best way I'm gonna put it, the stiffest, the, the problem with the chassis. It's, it's a rough riding because it's the short wheelbase.
Right.
But, but it has some life left in it. What they wanna do is use it as the backup for the backup, more or less.
Right.
And then, but at some point, it's gonna have to be...
Transitioned out of service?
Well, or...
Just refurbished.
Refurbished, I guess is what they call it, refurbished, but, and that may, depending on usage and everything else, they may fall within this budget year needing it done.
Yeah, the boxes, I mean, the boxes just have more life than the gun gear.
Yeah.
It's, it's the same thing as sheriff's vehicles. I mean, you can't just put two hundred fifty thousand miles on them, expect them to go run a call. And you're putting people's lives and things in. That community...
Well, this one is, in my understanding, the, the, the box wasn't correct for the chassis. And that if you're in a transporting patients, patients, you know, it, it really rides...
They had, they had two trucks. Is that the one that got transferred from, um, the volunteer truck?
No.
I think so, yeah.
There was two trucks that were put, boxes are built for four-fifty chassis and they put on three-fifties or something like that.
Chassis are, for what they said it was a shorter chassis.
Yeah, the springs, everything is not correct for the way the box.
Yeah.
I remember that from the days when I was riding around a little.
But that may come up within this budget.
And Philip's put in a grant request for half the cost of the ambulance but doesn't know yet whether they're approved.
Well...
Which that would be great. That would basically cover both prob, both, if we get the grant and we put the match, then what's left over out of that one ninety would take care of the refurbished.
Do you know where the grant was coming from?
Uh, it's from the, um, western council, uh, EMS.
Oh, okay, so our local, no?
No, it's not from the council, it's from the, uh, state rescue squad, state station.
Okay.
Acronym is for...
And that was done a while ago?
Uh, about three weeks. It seems like a while ago, probably like three, four seconds.
They've, they've been successful in getting it.
Yeah?
But that doesn't mean we're good at this point.
All right, okay, with EMS? Yep.
God bless them for what they're doing.
Yep.
You stretch out there, I'm going this way. I, I'm going this way, you go this way. We're banging each other over trying to stretch our knees out so they don't cramp on.
Don't worry, we're expecting y'all to have all the answers.
Fire rescue fund, fire department didn't ask for any increase. Rescue did ask for increase. What I recommended was pay those normal things we pay the insurance and those types of things.
Anybody got a, got the number?
What afternoon is type of the B C L?
What is it, fifty-seven?
Which that would be probably a very...
I think what I do agree with is that the, the request will be considered as other departments.
Yes, be considered.
We don't have a specific amount.
Hey, what? Fire department always does such a great job of getting information. Trying to field back through fifty-six to get to fifty-seven, one page is...
Yep. That's for sure.
So you're gonna drop the situation?
We received a note from them last year. Their question basically was...
I think what our county administrator has, uh, proposed looks pretty good.
I agree. Only for that block or just that one?
Just that one.
Well, no, I'm all right there. Are we gonna add, this is where we add if we're...
A fire truck?
Okay.
It's, um...
And it's not in there.
No, it's not in there.
No.
The tanker two debt service at the bottom, that's been rolled into another refinances, is that correct? We're still paying on that.
That's when it was paid off.
Paid off.
Paid off, I, we did. We had the, um, grease cars, one of the tankers and a trash truck.
Trash truck.
Yeah, paid off.
That's good, because, I mean, you'd hate to be paying on multiple ones, I guess.
So who wants the new truck?
Well, it's...
All of them. Probably, I wasn't on the committee, but I'm just guessing.
Well, all of them. Well, I don't know, maybe the one that didn't really ask for anything to use, so.
Is that request coming from the fire board or from individual station?
Yeah. Station two is the next one in line. Supposedly they'll get rid of the sixty-nine. Engine two will be replaced.
Engine two was about to replace sixty-nine, yeah, but they decided to keep sixty-nine as well. And now they're wanting to replace engine number two, engine, engine number two with the replacement.
It was a two A, isn't it?
Or a two A.
They say the sixty-nine is two A.
Okay.
Yeah, I see.
Okay.
That's what I had written down.
I get confused. I remember there was a two and a two A and I couldn't remember which one.
Tell me then.
I think the idea is replace engine and they can get rid of one, whichever one they want to get rid of. I know which one I would get rid of, but...
Station three and four chiefs would like their chief vehicle replaced, but the committee did not recommend that. Any chiefs' vehicles right now.
What was they, um, what was station two looking for in an engine? You know, is it in here? I probably looked at it and forgot.
I forgot what I was saying.
I know at one time Tony had talked about... At one time Tony talked about maybe having a four-wheel drive engine, but to get into a short...
This was a differential assist truck. It's not a true four-wheel. I speak politely. He says it'll get him in and out of it and get him to go.
I, I know that he was concerned, this is several years ago when I was on the committee, but he was concerned about getting into, you know, some of the areas that, you know, just tight, tight spots and deep driveways. I thought it was a great idea, I mean...
I think it's what I was called differential assist.
Yeah, I think so.
They kind of changed from what they were talking about last year.
Yeah, it's been several years since, you know, it...
Last year that we're talking about it, look like a, almost a hero model. Yeah, it's a setup rule. I think it was a full four-wheel drive.
But this is seven hundred fifty gallons, so that's a, that's a smaller engine.
What's the average?
Most engines would be a thousand.
Thousand.
Well, I think they had the tanker, so that's why.
Yeah. I know, I know, that was, that was his original idea, was use a smaller engine that can get in and then pump water from a tanker to the engine. But get the engine closer to the fire, makes, makes a lot of...
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I really liked the idea that, um, that he kind of thought through about just the terrain of the area and, um...
Do you ever look at what a debt service payment would be on that engine or...
We looked a little bit, if we get all three things, what are we thinking, two hundred fifty?
Two, all three things, what three?
Trash truck, ambulance, fire truck.
Right.
Probably two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand total.
Wasn't one part of the discussion too, that we may, if we did use it this year, then next year we may be doing two fire trucks at the same time?
Yes.
Is, is the, um, the last time we did trucks, we got loans for two and just spaced them out a couple of years ago. Be a better way of doing it, but if interest rates low, that's kind of planned for the next one. I think we did.
You couldn't remember which one was next, you know?
Don't either.
All right, all right.
I just, I don't wanna get behind and just have to hold.
Yeah, we catch up, yeah.
You had two and three in the third year.
Six years ago, that's kind of where we're at. We thought, we've gotta, we just gotta do it because if you wait another five years, then you're...
I feel that way with the EMS trucks.
Basically, is, is this the one that we decided last year to wait till this year or? Cause I was thinking we were supposed to have got, I think so, but we decided to put it to this year.
We even talked about EMS being it last year.
Yes, we did.
So I, instead of doing it last year, we did it this year.
Because we had reassessment coming.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't want, have any interest of going another year, so, man, that was difficult, but...
It, it takes quite some time to get them spec and build anyway.
Yeah.
Because if we put this off to next year, then, or if we put it off, that part off to next year, we're talking about ambulance, we're talking about two fire trucks at the same time.
Yeah.
And then anything else.
Yeah, it's too nice what else.
Yeah, and what, uh, well, that's just what I know of.
It's just, just to keep the flow.
Yep.
I would love to see, just like, the last time we set up a timeline, it's, uh, you know, we're gonna borrow the money and then you can, on this date, you can start. So, you know, July one, station two can start specing a truck and then...
Right.
July one of the next year, the next one to do it. And, you know, that way everybody knows exactly when they're allowed to do what and it's not, it's not a confusion of, um... July two, you guys.
Yeah, I mean, it would help us with budgeting, but we're all committed to that for the next few years.
Yeah, it's like a three-year process, but to spec it, build it, and then all do those kind of...
I mean, as I've said, safety is safety is paramount on all fronts.
The EMS and the fire is...
At the top of the list.
I would say, station four doesn't have any trucks since the tank, since their engine, which is, they still have the one tanker that hasn't been replaced. But their problem next, I don't know. I know three has a ninety, mid-nineties.
Think four would be...
I'm all right with trying to figure out how to make this happen then.
Yeah.
That's my recommendation. I'm gonna follow what we agreed to.
Yep.
Quickly, maybe we can do it. Lucky was talking about borrowing instead of in stages.
It kept, kept a real nice timeline the last time. It was just, it was just so helpful because, um, you know, there was no confusion. We didn't expect something, they, they knew what was coming. They knew, okay, it might not happen this year, but on this date, we can start the process of this. On this date, we can order it, you know, go to bid. And it was just, everybody's on the same page.
Did you say you thought that debt service off the...
Clear this.
Ballpark.
Clear this, yes, and two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand.
Add a little more of that probably would be...
This is how we get to it, yeah.
Well, and again, um, I mean, when we built the last one for one, we saw how in a year's time the price changed. Of course, it's hard to say what six months is gonna look like right now. It might be the time, yeah.
The interest rates there.
And not just that. I mean, the interest rates, yes, but I mean, the whole...
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Three, yeah, the whole, right.
If we need to get anything with a loan, we bring the time to give it.
Well, and I got from the conversation, one of the biggest problems, even if we were able to fix some of these, is acquiring the parts for...
Right, the older?
A lot of stations were having trouble, they just started making their own parts.
Trucks and they're thirty years old. No one keeps trucks thirty years, so. Sort of like our schools who are for the borders, you know, and they're just getting new parts for them.
Right, well, that one company, I can't remember the name of it, the truck company, they're not even in business anymore.
They went out.
Pierce there.
No, uh... Anyway, and there's no aftermarket parts in the... So, so the only way you can find that is if there's a parts truck somewhere, somebody has, and that particular part you need is good.
Right.
Working the deal out.
It was an odd name. American, American of France, that's it.
Now the station one's truck. They went out of business about, not long after the truck was bought.
Yeah.
And the eighty-five hundred for the heaters, that's the last station that we had to do, you know, we replaced the heaters in all the stations.
And making wages on that.
That'll take care of them. Theirs, theirs was in the best shape, so. That'll take care of them. Theirs, theirs was in the best shape, so.
Well, as I said, I'll. I'll go with our administrator's recommendations.
Figure some.
Especially if line two is just covering those things in the agreement.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what the next one is and then what that loan would look like if we, if we did two trucks in the, in the loan.
And the ambulance?
We'll get those numbers together. After we get to the next department.
Yeah.
Solid waste.
He says bank to the book.
That one is, but you know she has.
The department head did ask for two more employees. Just couldn't recommend that right now. We've advertised the one position for the second time, still got no applicant. Truck driver. Very concerning.
Maybe change.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd like to change.
People unable to work right now, so.
Where we did pull in the recycling boxes, you know, some of those guys are working, helping over at the transfer station and then also some of them are taking some of the comp to them. Get that down.
Yeah.
And that was a good move, by the way. I appreciate y'all doing that.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think it was good for our employees' safety.
Yeah, and I think most people do understand that that was the overriding and overarching reason for doing this.
Yeah, we've had a couple of calls, but folks understand.
Well, there's more than enough over there to keep them all busy.
Oh, yes. We got one out sickly, so.
That's one thing, it seemed like we'd never run out of this track.
It's always worked to do everything.
Yeah.
And if they get slammed there, they can go come up around some of the green box sites if they need to.
Yeah. They do that every day, but.
Well, I know, but I mean.
We also have the jail work crew is still coming over.
So they're gonna do it even through this.
I, I think if I understood the last email I got, didn't make a hold of them.
Really? I know the trustees are just gonna be here for this week and they're gonna get them over.
Super sent out an email, if I remember right. Until we get, get the cover this.
I like it.
Well, one of the thing, you know, jails pretty well steals a fish year round though.
Yeah.
Can take just the fishes. But still, all we need is just one in that jail.
That's it.
It's like wildfire, cause you, you still got people coming in.
Right.
And when they get in the booking, they done in through that door, you know. I don't care how many times they shire them out, it's still there.
Yeah.
Is it just, we need a lot of new tires, or capital outlays, is that for tires or is that for, is that to get roof tires?
On solid waste?
Yeah.
Yeah, buy tires.
Wow. I don't, I don't know that I can even explain it or not. He's using a different type of system on the little skid steers. So much skid steer tires now run about twenty-one hundred dollars a set. We have gone through two sets in the last two months. Well, it's looking at another tire that they say will run thirty to forty percent longer.
Just all the turning on the C M S?
Yeah, I guess.
See, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't explain.
Probably, I mean, it's probably just a really rough.
Yeah. I wonder if they ever looked in on, um, um, the track type that goes on that, we did work on that. Which was unlabeled.
It was something like that.
You know, unlabeled, gotten one. He got the track type.
Right.
It seemed like it lasted longer and they seemed like it can turn quicker and, you know, it's just a better one.
The only, only problem that I could see with the track is if they're in the waste and turning.
Yeah.
It may wind some of it after you hit two the.
When I seen him moving.
Wind, I'm just saying, well, if somebody got wire in the green box that dumps out on the floor and they're not paying attention.
I have naturally. Yeah, it just seems, wow.
And it may be better.
I wonder if some of that's just good stuff and tires too.
Somebody's gonna get the P S that we can explain exactly.
It seems like there's maybe in the, all that junk, they'd be cut tires a lot too.
You know, they say they would have to be a really heavy quiet tire.
Yeah.
They are.
Earlier we had talked before, okay, go ahead.
First we got, um. Just thinking nineteen thousand dollars for the three trash trucks. What else do you have? Two roll-off trucks, one dump truck, three skid steers, two pickups, two SUVs, three forklifts.
Tires, you mean?
Yeah, the partridge in a pear tree.
That partridge needs tires too.
Christmas song.
Sorry, gotta laugh a little bit.
I mean, new trucks cover a lot of mouths, wouldn't they do?
Yep.
And we'll talk to conditions. A lot of weight on.
You know, the recycling trucks are running every day.
Mm-hmm.
Then where we had the roof replacement, that's the same roof that has been on that building since it was built in seventy-three. You know, we patched it, different things. Mister Bolt had got a different process to replace it and we were hoping to do it by this year's money. It was about a third of that cost. I'm not sure we'll be able to do it or swing it.
It's kind of like the transfer station floor, you know, it patched so much.
Right.
Yeah, so I killed wood jeans when I was rolling up.
Patch on the patch on the.
Yeah.
Fourth patch, didn't order.
Wasn't enough free of the go-through, little spingers come and push it.
Yeah, I just patched a pair of jeans recently.
Cause nowadays actually top dog jeans.
Yeah.
Bigger than the whole of Morse's word.
I had a fortune in my cupboard.
When you become cool and don't even know.
There you go.
Okay, the skid steer is called an evolution wheel. Right? I don't know if y'all have ever heard of that. I thought we had pictures of it.
Here we go. Come home at my age when I wear them out there, they become vain and I'm trying to be younger.
On the roof, it was a twenty-six gauge gallblum R panels. They install the panels on a top half system that goes over the existing roof. We include a formed ridge cap, special rate trim. T K screws, whatever that is for a complete system. Gutters, elbow straps, and downspouts are all included. Labor. Turnkey price, twenty-three thousand.
Sounds better.
Twenty-three?
What I'm pulling up here looks like a solid tire, evolution.
Yeah.
Not a track, but a solid tire.
Yeah, but it's.
Reimpor.
Looks pretty so.
Yeah, it does.
Reimpor.
Yeah, but you got, I got that.
Yeah.
They were using them over at the, uh, the government county center. We could go over and look at them and talk to them over there. They were very pleased with them, how much longer they lasted.
And I wonder if we were using something like this Nighthawk Duraflex before, like a regular looking tire.
Chances help us before, especially if we're.
We've already bought the first set or whatever, ten or seven or whatever we call it.
That's a one safety issue, cause you get them tired from that cement floor. Better have something that's ripped.
I hope, I hope we save some money on fuel this year, it's hard to say.
Yeah, too bad we don't have a place to stop power.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, we might need to invest in some tanks here.
Buy some for apartments.
Yeah.
It's me, I gotta get a two or fifty gallon tank ready. I'm waiting for it to bottom out.
There you go.
So you could do this winter and go to back up?
Yeah.
Makes me wonder about going to. If you're back up, you better be ready for this little scarrow.
Don't get the money back out of you.
Yep.
I was hoping to get that roof to use this system and get the roof out of this year.
Right.
We're trying to keep behind this money and see if we've got enough that we can do it.
Gotcha.
And ditch B is what we've been talking about in the back, back there.
Yes, I heard it. D Q's still never given us approval to go ahead.
Yeah, haven't heard anything other than.
We have not. I said they're looking at it.
And back to the roof, did we bid it out?
We have not, but I can do this under our small purchase.
Right, right, cause it's only gonna be, yeah.
An addition, what is that?
He was wanting to do additional to the side of the maintenance building to park one of the trucks under.
Like a wing two or a whole enclosed? Do you know?
Somewhat enclosed, not funny like.
Maybe on three.
Yeah.
Maybe on two sides.
Two sides, yeah.
You're building on to the building, one side will be already.
Yeah, concrete floor.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I don't.
We were, we had mentioned something about trying to maybe look at, get a maintenance or mechanic person to do oil changes and stuff. Has that been inserted into the budget anywhere yet?
If it's not.
This would be where we, because we had talked about maybe doing it over there if they had room, so.
Maybe that extension?
Well, if he's part of the, well, when the truck's.
When the truck's not in there.
Or, but, um, I think they have a lift inside already. So the person would probably work inside.
Right.
The lane part, boy's open out there, but. I just bring it up that this is where we need to insert that, what it is to get them to put the bumpers in there.
If you get a gas experience with roofs and stuff, you don't get them long. You can get some friends in there.
Oh, yeah.
Like before it's be effective in the same eighty dollars, it's gonna be widespread.
Yeah, not just in, yeah.
He's gonna have to be a jack all trade.
Tire changing on the smaller vehicles, I don't know about the bigger ones, but.
Yeah, but that has, so what you, if I understand where you're coming from, it needs to be spread out to all departments, not just one department's employee. Almost like it's a building and grounds.
Yeah, that's, that was the topic in that conversation. That's why I was asking, would it be in here or somewhere else?
I had started working on it and all this other happened, so I got back to it.
But it would be in this section or somewhere else?
I just put out the buildings and grounds, cause part of that.
Spread it out.
If they were gonna do regular maintenance too.
That's all I have, just.
We thought you did before you were gonna get it, I already had.
I hadn't forgotten it, I just had more.
I knew what y'all had been doing. Several things going on.
Just wanted to.
So that'd be great if we could save out of this year to get that roof done. That'd be, that'd be wonderful. When do you think you'll know?
We have some more repair bills coming for the trash trucks, so we'll kind of wait and see what you have.
Okay.
And right now, could we even have it done? Is that considered essential, does somebody come in and do that, or is that something we don't?
Yeah, most construction is considered essential stuff.
They're outside.
As I said, that's more than ten loads of work that's on the roof.
Right.
I've had so many people asking me for this, including my wife.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
What's, what you can and can't do and I have an idea.
Things change daily.
Yeah.
Today's conference may do something else and they are switching to three days a week instead of every day. So it'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is what I understand.
What?
With the governors' conferences or televised.
From the state? From Virginia?
Yeah, instead of every day, it'll be every other day. They go, look at it, do it Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
All good on solid waste?
I am, yeah.
I am.
Recycling. Um, solid waste, does it use, or you can also have your trash truck with a little hospital or anything? We can take out the recycle truck with the red gate. We found a good deal on a used one, so we bought that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Out of some of this year's money.
You left that one, I've been standing around, it's got the light on sometimes.
Take three of that in, looks good.
There goes, yeah.
So that brings it down to one eighty-one? No, one ninety-one. Three eighty-six.
Down getting one of the other trucks working on and you just happened to see that over.
Wow.
Guys will all make it a real deal.
Flat nose, probably, probably helps everything. Get around the end.
Even the inside, almost brand new.
It looked like it wasn't really good shoes.
I guess grab these on top of the game and gaze out at them.
Yep.
On the scrap metal thing, is there no way that we can have somebody come get those rather than have to pay to have it all done?
He tries to work with different people and I think he's got something worked out, but it's not completely yet. And hopefully he's got something worked out on the tire disposal.
Good.
The last time D Q was there, he said, we couldn't keep as many, it was, it had always been, we could have up to a thousand tires on the site, but now they changed that, so.
Oh, really?
He's trying to figure out something else.
Well, we always had nine hundred ninety-nine, we know, so.
I noticed Ryder's, I don't know, like, they go count. One hundred, that started a tire reshr- or tire shred. Let's go check for them, see what their deals were.
What's the name of the place?
Ryder. I think I got their number in my phone.
We thought we had that worked out years ago and with the company, but it all fell through unfortunately.
Um, we did that for a while, cause the regional commission had a program and they were doing.
Shredding?
I read somewhere where transportation department was looking at, you know, using it, mixing it in on some of this road bedding and stuff. I read somewhere where transportation department was looking at, you know, using it, mixing it in on some of this road bedding and stuff.
Roads, yep.
That all dried up and.
The material used, it couldn't be worse. As I say, I told the camera.
I think I got that number to have.
I saw something where some companies actually using certain levels of plastics and mixing it into their road systems, so. I don't know how that's working out, but.
Well, I'm worried about theirs. Depending on what type of materials you make, if it breaks down, you get stuff that's not off.
They had a grading, had to be a certain grade.
You wouldn't want a lot of that in the water system.
I wouldn't think so.
Man. I'm good on recycling. I'd like to stay here, I don't want to turn the page.
Oh, I turned the wrong one.
That, that's probably better.
Social services, using their numbers.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 go to the next one.
When I seen that, I thought, well, what's the problem there?
We don't know what?
No, no, I just, I just gone past that one. Just got to the next one, it was like, oh. Man, a man, a man, a man, a man.
The latest figures we have from them, so.
That's weird.
How much?
Well, we got a lot, much of that coming in the other, revenue side.
Yeah, but still. But still. So, say the least.
Yeah, yeah, and the one on thirty-seven boat.
Yep, yep.
They, they have tried to make it realistic.
I know, I know.
Our total county share on DSS is two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Three thirty-six, what's that comparison last?
Forty-seven thousand dollar increase.
Forty-seven?
If the formulas, if the numbers stayed as that.
We're getting ready to say, I don't think we will.
Well, knowing it now.
Absolutely.
Well, when I was on the phone with the department's.
Yeah.
Finance secretary, once supervisors asked the question about formulas and mandates, and they were very elusive, but the way he put it was, we don't see the formulas changing, the dollar amounts money. And I don't see, you, you, I just got a, the hair stood up on the back of my neck when he said, I'm afraid what they're gonna do, they're gonna shift more to us, that their expenses involved with everything going on, that they're gonna shift more expenses to us in creative way. Versus changing the formula, so.
Well, and.
But nobody will know until they finally approve their budget.
And one's gotta remember whenever, and then I know, to give you a law enforcement, know this one, things get very difficult in life, sometimes our neediest have to suffer. And, um.
That's what worries me, is when we grow out of this.
And we're gonna need to prepare to protect those that are not able to protect themselves.
CSA isn't saying any update on you.
We haven't heard any more of this first families since all this.
Right, right.
See, that, that stands to have a big impact.
On CSA, yeah.
I think.
Well, so did Chad, I mean, that's what he was saying.
Unfortunately, until they figure it out and give you the place, we have no idea what is.
When we pass this page, we've been at for hour and a half, if anyone wants to take a break.
Sounds good.
That first line, we can cut some money out of it.
Which one are y'all?
EMS.
Not one.
All right, Kevin, I'll make it really clear, I'm talking about Kevin. I'm the one operator, not this guy.
He's standing down there, but he didn't hear you.
Not a lot of changes in this budget.
Nope. Actually, it went down. Tackle out lays.
The, um, thirty-five thousand for the study of their towers, we won't get that spent that year, this year, so he'll ask to carry that over.
Okay. Yeah. Any grants on the horizon?
Already mentioning.
Okay.
Now, this is Sheriff Craig had talked to you about two, two more dispatchers, and this is where that would be. No, he, he started off with four, and then he switched down to, if he could do one or two a year.
Yeah.
It just does not reflect that.
Right. So yours are the most updated there, because I have three thirty-seven, six twenty-five.
This is because the state funded positions are only getting the three percent bonus instead of the three percent salary increase.
Gotcha.
That's words.
Gotcha.
Change on the road.
Right. Right. And your reductions are just here and there, Terry, not much? So the trunk line from citizens, got a better deal or something?
It just hasn't been spending as much.
Oh, good.
I reduce the.
Excellent. Well.
I just say, I really appreciate, I'm a, I'm a tech backup that we continue to do, that's, oh, nine one one.
Yep.
That is really helpful. I've had a few calls where I used it to find a, use the mapping to find a location, but I was having some trouble to figure out where to go.
There you go.
And that's.
Saving lives.
Yeah, I mean, it's really helpful.
Yep. I'm okay with that line. I think this is another area where at this time, we need to be as vigilant as ever. With our eight-nine-one-one and everything that goes with it.
School figures are next.
There's a part you don't learn how to ask him for a leave.
I was gonna copy all this one.
Right.
Unfortunately, I have a time delay on this, so.
It's okay, you got nothing to apologize about. We're doing fine.
Well, I didn't pick up Kevin.
Oh, there you go. Easy come, easy go, Kevin.
Oh, okay. It's, it's real hard because it's jumping.
He's, uh, he's the only one who works part-time, I'm the only one that happens. Well, it's gonna work.
We're up to ten to ten in four.
There you go.
The first, first month, we don't tell you.
Well, we did it again.
Yeah, it did, double and triple time in the last few years. Yeah, absolutely.
Miss Tabitha also, she's been working a lot too.
Put two lines up and see if it fits.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to.
No, I mean, seriously.
Nope, that didn't do it either. Okay.
We gave them a raise.
Kind of different when he's talking.
Hey, what, seasonal.
Yeah, Steve said the same thing last night.
That's what contributed to my problems, so.
It started so early, it's.
Yeah, dude.
Yes, indeed.
I'm a little bit worried, we got some freezes coming, some of these fruit trees and stuff that's out.
Yep.
I seen it running down there and coming down red, but I can sort it down, what I'm doing now, yesterday, but that thing was beautiful.
Today, yeah. Apple trees are already buddied out, blooming?
These are the newest, not much from.
Peach trees in full bloom, and my apples are just all sitting there rooted.
Apples tend to be able to withstand a lot, though.
They can take a little bit, but I mean, if it's a twenty.
Well, if it's a twenty-seven, twenty-six, then, yeah, nobody.
That's an increase in state and federal funding.
It is, these are the newest.
Okay. So the new one is twenty-three. Nine twenty-nine. Six eighty. That's reflected on revenue too?
Yes, ma'am. I am not sure if they have met yet and approved their budget.
They're meeting tomorrow night, as I understand.
Are they?
Yeah.
Wonder how it been closed for the rest of years, would it affect their budget?
Electricity will be down. Operations and maintenance.
Few fuel, so potentially. They're running buses.
Well, they're running buses.
But I don't know if it's.
What I mean is, for the state reimbursement, for average daily attendance, the state will cut that back.
I don't.
I haven't heard anything about, even.
March, March third.
Is what?
Is the snapshot eight for average daily attendance?
God, they've got to help, I mean, that's gotta be, state has to be.
I would think.
Yeah, you would think.
They were supposed to be working on all the plans this year.
Whole new world.
Anyway, those are the latest numbers that we have.
Okay.
Well, but if, if they're still doing some instruction to internet access and stuff like that, then even though the school is physically closed, if they're still conducting any kind of classes or whatever, then it looks like it would still count in the grand scheme of things.
It is my humble opinion that if we're still paying teachers across the state, and that has not changed, that at least for the rest of this school year, I would tend to think that, when was the last snapshot?
Last year.
Last year, at this time?
Yeah, March thirty-first.
I thought they did one of the follow-on ones this morning, is it twice a year or not?
They might do it twice in a year with the.
One that counts.
One that counts is March.
But if they do one twice a year, one would assume, and I know these are big assumptions.
Especially in camp.
Okay.
December, December one camp.
I just, I just can't see. I mean, if, all of this is in the budget at the state level, I can't imagine that they would. I mean, there may be other areas, but I can't imagine now in schools that they'll change much.
We'd hope not.
We will find out?
Yes.
I've got a niece that's a teacher in Austin. She don't know what she gonna do.
Yeah.
My granddaughter teaches in Carol, they still going on, they still got their stuff at home, you know, they're just keep on. Different work.
Well, most of the teachers are either on twelve-month or ten-month contracts.
Right.
So that's locked in.
Right.
You know, so, here regardless of what they're doing, they're still getting paid. Or should be, I guess. Might be speaking out of turn.
You're an open source.
So do we have an updated recap?
Really, if we, oh, contingency this minute.
Although I haven't copied over.
Oh, yeah.
The admin, what supervisor sold us.
Oh, yeah, right.
I really feel like we need to add more to contingency based on what all has happened this year.
Yeah.
One of my fears too is, it's gonna be so hard to project revenue that, especially things like meals tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, I mean, there's things that we won't transit occupancy, and that potentially, we won't know when we pass the place because.
That's right, correct.
You know, there's a, I mean, there, hate to speculate, but there's a possibility that we see a reprieve as the weather gets warmer, and then potentially get bad again when the weather gets cold again, so I mean, that's.
And that's traditionally our time when we don't have as much.
That's how flu works, so I don't know, you know, there's just so much unknown that you don't really know what might happen, so it's.
But that's a time when we don't have as much revenue when it gets colder.
I'm just saying, we, it's gonna be hard to project a lot of things, you know, it's.
Yes.
You know, we collect about nine hundred thousand, the sales tax.
Yeah, yeah. That's a big deal.
Or you think it three hundred instead of two or four?
I was thinking three hundred.
The one good thing, I guess, is that at least the ones that have hit us hard this year with social services and CSA, hopefully, are projecting more realistic numbers this year.
That's what I'm hoping.
But I think you're right, I think.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, if your recommendation is go to three, I'm in agreement.
Budget plan, I know you.
Yeah, that's right.
You want me to go back up and copy over the earlier parts?
Let's just see, if it'll work. Do you need to go into the other computer, do it?
See what our bottom line.
So you don't have a whole bunch of headaches?
I know it's not.
No, it's not. I mean, we might have to go.
We don't know, it tell you, do some projections on, uh, potential loan and what we would.
And, and I've got to tell you, I have four different budget scenarios, and what you're looking at here is a one-step pay increase and an eighty-five percent health insurance. So, there's, like I said, four different scenarios, I went with the.
Most conservative?
The most conservative.
Thank you.
If we wanted to do the tax rates on regular schedule, we would need to vote to go public through today, wouldn't we?
Or is it too late? We're still gonna be, we'll be a week behind.
But I think they'll get it forgiven, so.
I'm gonna.
Yeah, go.
I'm gonna have to take it out of the one, other one.
Yeah.
We can use that time to talk about what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Have you all come to a decision on what you want to do with the health insurance? She could use that, she was going through.
My feeling is to stick with the most conservative plan, given the new realities we face.
What I've got up there is eighty-five percent, what I've laid under tables, eighty, eighty-five, and ninety.
I want to do something like an increase. It'll be my, we're at eighty right now, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why I.
I think there's discussion the last time was.
Ninety.
Two, two steps versus. Two, two steps versus no increase and then one step with eighty, with eighty-five or roughly what we were talking about.
I think so, yeah.
Ballpark in it.
Right.
We talked about. We got to get ahead. We had also talked about maybe two steps versus one step.
Yeah, that was what I had in the original.
Eighty, eighty.
First stop.
What was? Do you recall what the increase cost of the county was going from eighty to eighty-five? That'll help me.
It seems like around thirty something?
I think it was thirty-six.
I mean, it really wasn't in the grand scheme of things. It wasn't a lot of money.
It was like thirty-six.
Seems like a reasonable one. So that answers that question.
Right.
Something like that.
Yep. Thirty-six or thirty-nine, I'm saying.
I mean, I know it's money, but.
Yeah, right.
You know what, any dollar.
Anyway, we can ease the burden.
The difference between eighty-five and ninety percent employer contribution was thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
Thirty-one.
That's between eighty-five, two eighty-four. Between eighty-five and ninety.
Would be on what?
Thirty-one to eighty-four.
Thirty-one to eighty-four between.
Eighty-five and ninety percent.
That's between eighty-five.
What about eighty and ninety? About the same?
She doesn't know that one here.
Yeah, I guess.
At least somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah.
And then the difference between one step and two steps for the county employees is forty-two thousand, three ninety-six.
So that's a total of seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-three.
And that was between what, one and two?
Yes, sir.
So basically seventy thousand dollars if you do a two-step and an eighty-five.
Or ninety.
Or whichever. I mean, I was just, I was just looking at the eighty-five on the course.
I'm just wondering.
Well, we have to do something because of cost. Cost of employees going up.
Yeah.
In my opinion, we have to do something. If that something is, I'm like.
Well, it.
We don't know what's coming down the road.
Well, and they're the ones that's carrying this county. I mean, they're the ones there that are day in and day out providing services to the citizens.
What's ninety and two-step? Is that seventy-three? No, that was just one step. Not a hundred?
Over a hundred.
A hundred and six.
Yeah, a hundred and six, yeah.
And she's got eighty-five in that one already.
Right.
So I'd say one step and eighty-five, is that what that says?
Yes.
I was surprised on the sheet that she did for you all. Out of ninety-six employees, we have twenty-three that don't take health insurance.
Yeah, I know. I'm surprised.
You know, so you kind of have to, it may, we've had several comments about that.
But there was. None of them, there might be a switch from.
You know, because that's.
And I would think if my spouse worked at another employer that are different plan, then you compare, you know, if you went tonight, that may.
Right.
Might be worse. You would need to get down here and get off of that one.
Right.
So it may, it may pay us to do step raises rather than.
Well, that's what I was getting at because you're exactly, you're helping everybody that way.
Right.
But it also may, if you go too far on, if you, it may be more cost going with the ninety percent than you realize because if five people switch on to our insurance.
The math goes up.
The cost where if you gave a pay increase, they continue to pay into someone else's insurance and then.
It wouldn't be burdening.
I guess I'll try, maybe a better way of saying is it may be easier, easier for us to project the actual cost of a step raise than it would be in insurance. That might be easier.
I guess that was my logic, being fair to everybody that way.
Two steps versus, and leave the insurance at eighty.
At eighty-five. I'd like to do that, but just because at least you're trying to cover the increased cost.
I just don't understand. So the two-step and increase the insurance, I can live with that. I've seen three so far. This is just seven.
Let me tell her to use that one.
I mean, I.
Two-step and eighty-five. I mean, I went around and around on this. I don't.
Who said can rule? What are you thinking?
I'll enter my stake when she comes back.
Okay.
Yeah. It doesn't affect his worry about it.
Yes. I don't even want to get into that with her.
I'll just go on the record as saying I value every single employee's service here, but given these austere times and the fact that we did have a major restructuring of salaries, I think if things stay the way they are, it may be more prudent to do a one-step and eighty-five percent. But if, I mean, we're, we do it by majority, so I would, you know, go with the majority, but I just think we have to be fiscally conservative right now and, um, you know, one step and eighty-five would be where I would be, but.
More so Jim, I'm here on confidence and interest.
Oh, yeah. Got you. So we'll now take the. Maybe that's where you take that home with you guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's not showing us there, but the next item on your budget after contingency is the overall payment for the bond issue and that's for the new debt.
You said what?
For the new debt for the.
Debt, oh. I thought she said debt. I'm sorry.
Oh, nice.
I was going to say, well, that changed a lot.
Barbecue, grill, is everything?
Elevator.
Get me an elevator back here so I can get.
I think I sent you all down towards, I sent you all there.
We was talking on meal tax and, um, I don't think it really worries me because, um, most of our meal tax next year, if things don't change, it'll be history. Yeah, because, um, restaurant, I was talking to a waitress the other morning before I got out here. And she said she wasn't expecting anything for this year, you know. She just wanted to see something done about teacher. But she says, and she didn't know her two restaurants was going to survive or not.
You know, I've seen projections, I mean, national projections where more than fifty percent of restaurants will be bankrupt if it goes on very long.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Seen the same thing?
Broke my heart because they put, I was working in table.
One of the things that we talked about on tourism, we've got some money that we normally use for promotions that, uh, not a lot, just a few thousand dollars, but trying to. Right now, you don't really want to promote Floyd because you don't, you can't have, people can't travel here. So, you know, it's no point in spending advertising. You know, how do we use that money that we normally spend on trying to get people here to maybe support, support the local businesses? So there's been some, you know, we've kind of discussed that on what you would do about different ways you could do that, you know. Obviously, you can't try to get people to go to the restaurant right now, but what, one of the thoughts is maybe just, you know, incentives to get people to buy gifts or tickets or, you know, something to kind of get them to
Generate.
Generate.
Yeah, future.
Future, yes. So there's at least some promise, you know, future that they has in it. I don't know what I'll come about, but maybe.
Well, I was also wondering about the EDA and some of their, some of their activities. You know, with them, it's always, you know, they want to bring new business in. There's industry here, but they also want to preserve what's here.
Tabitha, could we give you all an update from there being Monday night? If you'd like.
If she's comfortable doing that.
Yes, um, I brought the paper with me last night, but, um, I'll try to go off the cuff here. Uh, we, uh, the, the EDA at their Monday night, Ladina and I presented that, um, they take action to suspend three months of the five and ten loan payments. So, um, the five and ten, uh, loan companies that have, um, our payments are deferred penal, without penalties and interest um, for April, May, and June, and then the EDA will, um, take additional action if needed in June um, to extend or, um, call back, you know, getting the loans back paying in June, by July. Um, also, they, um, just discussed other things like at the Innovation Center and, um, you know, making sure that the tenants there are able to do business as, as normal, given guidelines by the governor and the president. So, so that's kind of where they're at. And if I could add one more thing, Ladina and I have created a, um, COVID- nineteen business resource page on the Floyd County EDA website and are trying to update that daily with, um, information for businesses and then also hopefully, um, by the end of today or tomorrow, there will be one for, uh, workers. So what workers can do if, if they've been laid off or need assistance.
I have gone to the page and I really appreciate all the updates. It's been very informative and I have, uh, suggested some things that you hadn't caught, um, to also add to the page. I think anything that has to do with Virginia Employment Commission, any kind of links that can be, uh, sent their way, uh, for employees is also good. And, um, just sharing and getting the word out that the EDA is there for everybody, um, is so important.
Yes, ma'am.
How many different companies have the five and ten one? He's making a drink.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can pull up my.
Is Speedy, is Speedy coming out?
I left that at home.
Speedy Alcozell, sir.
Just my daily dosage. Stay on schedule.
You know what? I always said I hated Dad. I have to get one of them things that my mom and dad.
The tray.
Oh, the tray.
I got one.
I got three.
Well, mine's divided in two sections, so one for morning, one at night.
That's what I got, one morning, one at evening. That's when I knew I went over the hill.
Oh, dang there.
I go for good, Greg.
That's the straight stuff too. It isn't even the flavor.
I guess for me, that's, I would like to kind of have an idea of, you know, all this is great. We've worked through it for where we headed. And I I guess it's time, Mr. Chairman, for the hard talk.
Yep.
I would have conducted it, but I was thinking we were waiting on send.
Hoping to see her another final number or something.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's important.
Too, but I mean, we know roughly.
We know we're not where we need.
Right.
We, we get a thought for it.
Well, we know we need precincts to take care of the school instruction.
Kind of feel like was regarding that, I mean, nobody's ever excited about any increases, but I only we kind of committed to that when we signed off on the project and difficult time, but can't get away from that. I mean.
We've been hammered over for a long time.
I, um, I, I'm going to go now because I'm going to say I'm in total disagreement, I think, with everybody probably in this room. I feel that it is absolutely imperative that we put on hold anything and everything, given the situation we find ourselves in. I cannot, I cannot raise taxes on any of the citizens of Floyd County at a time when we are facing some of the most challenging economic times the United States of America has ever seen. We may be looking at a total restructuring of our entire economic way of doing business. And everybody has got to understand, in my opinion, that this is going to take an effort by everybody to try to make the United States weather this horrible storm and come out stronger. But I cannot raise taxes on the citizens of Floyd County that are losing their jobs left and right, that are facing uncertainty as to where they're going to pay their next mortgage, how they're going to afford their medicines, and how they will afford groceries. I understand completely that we have committed to something. But we committed to something at a time when we had a school division that was going to school. We don't know what we're going to come out of this like. To think that by Easter, we're all going to be able to go to church, I believe, is totally absolutely a fairy tale. And as is being seen in places like New Orleans, Florida, Pennsylvania, and across this country, with testing will come more positive results, and I think that I just, I just cannot in good conscience raise taxes on the citizens of Floyd County. And I think we have to go into an austerity type of mentality to get through this situation. So that's where I stand on it.
Well, fortunately, we're charged with establishing a budget at this time for our community and our county. We made some commitments. It's difficult, and that's why we're here, to make those difficult decisions. And it was like, I would like to see us, whatever the consensus is, to have a projected budget in two phases. One, preparing for keeping everything possibly as level as possible, as hard as that may be with the uncertainty of the economy. And then two, if things seem to be well, and I have no education or experience to predict that things won't be okay by Easter or that it will be. I don't know. I'm looking at Floyd County. So I feel like I would like to see us.
I'm looking at Floyd County, so I feel like I would like to see us, whatever the consensus is, have, have an A and a B scenario. And at least we're narrowed down to two paths and not wide open, you know, and just do the best we can. It's our job, it's difficult, none of us like it, none of us are gonna like it, you know, if Plan A is going. If the consensus is Plan A, sticking with the three cents and no more going forward, or, you know, Plan B's making hard cuts, either way, it's gonna be difficult. Here we are.
Steve, where was Karen, where are you thinking?
Well, I think it all, a lot of it hinges on two. At, at, at some point here, pretty quickly, we're gonna have to officially say whether we're gonna keep June fifth, or are we gonna kick it out, and how long are we gonna kick it out?
I think we'll have to say that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
These decisions have got to be.
But so far, we haven't, and I would like to hear from Steve as we as any way possible on his opinion of. Deferring the late fees and that sort of stuff, but that throws me for a loop. Because I've sat on the board in the past for various reasons through time, and the board has granted that in the past now. Granted, I was off the board eight years, so a lot of things changed, so I'm still learning. But I agree with the A and the B. If things get to take back up. If things take back up. We, we've already committed on the seven, seven point two million, the heating and air.
Right.
And, and that comes into play this year, we borrowed the money for the previous year, but that automatically comes in.
Yes.
Because that, that's a done deal.
Yes.
If. If we hold back on anything. I, I prefer to hold back on the. Some of the stuff in the industrial parks than I had the school project. But that said, we may, I think we need a A and a B, and we just, I think we just went through A. I don't know what the final outcome of that's gonna be, or we went through the A the first time, but I kind of agree, we have something that's close to flat line. We, we delay these payments, fine, or delay the date that it's due, fine, I, I don't think we'd go as far as one suggested, but. Uh, you know, I think July or August would still be okay, but I don't think we can delay whatever we do past.
The reason I've said August was because, uh, we have to have a budget passed by July, so we have to have a tax, uh, tax rates set by the end of July.
Right.
So then, if you had a tax rate set by the end of, I mean, June, I'm sorry, June, that would give people still another five weeks before it was due.
Well, and one thing that, one option we can do if we flat line and no tax increase, budget locked in. We, we can tell the people that when this, you know, if by August this thing's leveled out and it's coming back up, we may readdress the issues. Because we can change at any time. We could go back in and have a budget hearing in August if we had to. And, and set it, and still have time for it to take effect to December. I don't think we could go much past August, but. Or could we?
You know, I think.
It'd be hard to if we go past August.
I think there are a lot of people in this county that can pay their taxes on June fifth. I, I think there really are, I think there are a lot of people in this county, and I believe that many of them would pay their taxes on June fifth. I am vowing to pay my taxes on June fifth. There are many who may not be able to, but I think we should encourage any and all people that can afford to pay their taxes on June fifth to pay. And then, as a, as a, as the citizen's thing to do. And then there are going to be those who can't pay, they've lost two jobs, they've lost two incomes. My family has personally been affected by this crisis with one of my children being furloughed yesterday. So I, I, that there are many who will not be able to pay their taxes and I don't have a problem going to August for those folks. But I want to encourage everybody in this county that can pay their taxes to go ahead and use the June fifth deadline.
You have to have a tax rate first.
I understand that, I understand that, but we're talking about, we're just talking about right now paying the taxes.
But more than, unless legal counsel changes it, we would have, I, I would encourage anybody to pay their taxes as soon as they can.
Right.
We do that every day.
Right.
Every, any year, every day.
Correct.
But as far as the, the mandatory date, if we can't relieve penalties and interest, then. It gets.
Yeah, yeah, I get you, yeah.
But part of it too is, I don't know that I'm ready to vote on it, uh, to go to public hearing today because we have to have thirty days notice. And I don't know what thirty days from now, if we can even hold a public hearing.
Well, Steve told us last night.
I understand that, but I don't know that things, so much has changed in the last thirty days, I don't know what will change in the next thirty.
Oh, I agree.
So much has changed in the last.
Oh, it would be, it would, it would pretty much be a virtual telephone type setting.
If the potential, I guess for me, maybe this is my way of saying, if the potential of holding a public hearing in June is an actual public hearing where people can come. Is higher that we can hold it in June than it would be in April, then I would rather hold a public hearing in June. That way, people can have a better chance to participate.
Well, and that goes back to our delay. Like I said, July, August, but I don't think we could, I don't think we could sustain going past August just simply for cash flow.
Correct.
And that's gonna stretch us if we go to August, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And that's on existing stuff, not new stuff, existing.
Correct.
And so you don't, don't we usually have that? Is it in July, there's a big payout to the school on the salaries and stuff?
Well, there's that, but we have a lot of debt service that comes due in July also.
Yeah, debt service and the payout to schools for, I mean, July is a big month for us.
Mr. Durbin apologized, he's been putting out fires all morning, uh, has not had a chance to review your question, but he's gonna try to get it before noon.
You recall what, help me, I gotta spin numbers, the debt service on this, on that heating and air is gonna be ballpark, I don't need to exact.
Page you on?
Thirty-nine? Thirty. Isn't that where it is? Is that the one that she put in? On page twenty-two, we've got the debt service, speaking to school and students. Turn eighty-three, I'm not sure if that's the.
Is it that part?
Yes, she did all those.
She say.
Yeah, probably, too.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
All right, let's see, page twenty-two.
The lease service purchase, we got one thirty-seven.
Eighty-three, that's, that's a hundred thou, that's almost two cents in the sale, whatever's in that line item. Or for that, yeah, debt service, B and B, school improvement, two eighty-three, all right, so. If we're getting approximately a hundred and eighty-nine a penny, then we're right at. Two cent just for that. Now, I know we've got some debt services that's coming off, so that's gonna switch around.
Yep.
And, and she's not in here, but, and I know we recently did it, but it might be prudent to have these people look at, at redoing our. Yeah, redoing everything at the lower interest rate to see what savings.
But it's so volatile right now, we were pretty low when we got those.
Well, I'm just thinking, I have.
I mean, it's not as low as it.
It was, it was two thousand sixteen.
Right.
That's right.
Right, the two seventeen, the lease purchase?
The refinance.
The refinance.
Was it sixteen?
It says, two thousand sixteen refinance.
We've done it since I've been on board, so I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Maybe eight.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh. You know, that may gain us some savings, who knows? I just think if, if we do it toward tax increases, we need to do everything we can to save money in other areas, if, whether it's refinancing or. And we may need to do it even before flatlining the budget to gain that contingency up there. I just think it's worth looking at again.
I, I just don't know if we're gonna know the true numbers until they get an idea of what our lease payments would be or. Our bond payments on the vehicles that we've purchased.
Yeah.
That, that's really gonna change, because we've got a lot of money in here, you know, it's a hundred ninety thousand for ambulance and.
Yep.
Trash truck and stuff, I mean, all that would be combined, so it's gonna be really up in the air, I think.
No, I, but I'm just trying to get as best we can a number. I mean, unfortunately, nobody's crystal ball's clear right now, and it's not gonna be for a while. It, uh. And even if, and really, talking about flatlining the budget, that's not exactly accurate either because of the state increases to certain departments. Basically, we'd be, basically, if we flatline on our side, we're taking raises and steps and everything away from our people, but the state's still, any state employees gonna still be getting theirs.
Right.
I guess, which that kind of bothers me a little bit too, but.
In my mind, uh. Think the flatline, you know, would be just carrying over previous year budget, add just the, the essential things that. You know, would have to be in the.
Basically, taking capital out of it, or we can.
As much as we can.
I think people would understand that, if we, if we got three months from now and had to pass a budget and. We, the economy was still struggling, I think people would. I think the fire department would understand that.
They don't get a truck.
They might have to wait a year to get a truck, because they're working jobs too, I mean, I think it's, that's.
Yep.
But I, I would prefer to wait to make that decision, just to see.
Just to get more, yeah, to get some more information.
I agree with you, but if today is three months from now. I, my, what I've just said stands, I, I think we have to be austere and I just cannot put a tax increase on the citizens of Floyd County in all good conscience.
I'm not looking for anything concrete, I would just like to know what direction we're headed in, you know.
Just trying to do okay.
I'm not looking to call for a vote on a tax increase.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I'm just telling you, that's where I'm at.
Well, see, I'm concerned about, uh, raising taxes at this time too.
Sure.
Very concerned, on, on anybody.
Yep.
And business or citizens or all, and, uh. But if, yeah, if this thing does take a upturn, it looks, that's why I mentioned that, you know, if we had to, we could do a flatline or something close. Then in August, it looks like we're seeing an upturn, things is taking off, people going back to work, whatever, then we could come back to this.
Yeah.
And we would, that's about as late as we could go, and still have time to get tax tickets.
I think in the, really in the next month or two, we're gonna get a pretty good idea of where this is going, either it's dragging on and it continues to bust economy, or it's gonna.
And the forecast is early.
They just be able to take a period, one o'clock is more, and people are guaranteed a salary for the next four months. You know, we, we may not be hurt as bad, but.
What's salaries for the next four months?
Twelve hundred a month plus five hundred per child.
For four months?
For four months.
Plus, they guarantee your salary for some of these businesses for four months.
If, if, if at all, I didn't see the final version, but that was, because there was one group working, they wanted two thousand a month and a thousand per child.
Who knows what's hidden down there.
That's what I'm saying, so.
When you said one AM, that was just like.
Until I read it, I can't tell you.
Yeah.
Well, then there's the White House briefing at one today, so.
Right.
Maybe we'll learn something from that.
I hope so.
Stay around.
I shouldn't say this on the mic, but if Schumer's done agreed to it, then that means Congress has pretty well agreed to it because. Hillary Clinton, she's on the same page on it, I guess, but, you know.
Just from my turn, my fault, can we, can we maybe take baby steps with this thing and start with reassessment and say, okay, and then let's get to the next step? I mean, are we all, we're, I'm not turning.
We, no, we, we should do every avenue we can know how to do.
I mean, are we all good with, or where do we stand on that, I guess, my question is to.
With the reassessment, if we equalize the tax rate with no increase.
Fifty-seven cents.
Fifty-seven cents, that's the number I needed to get at.
One more time, what was that?
Fifty-seven.
Or what?
Equalize tax rate, which means with the tax rate, we have to be bringing the same amount of revenue that we're bringing now, because that's with the new values.
Thank you, this is my first.
Well, technically, that's a little bit lower.
Correct.
Yeah, sixty cents now.
No, but I mean, that would be, that's actually like fifty-seven point something, right?
It was fifty-six point something, yeah.
Yeah, we turned it on a light point.
No, no, we're not, we're always up to saying that's.
We're not getting that.
That's the closest we can get to it.
Get to, fifty-seven, and that still keeps us within the one percent.
Now, if we left the tax rate at sixty cents, what was the projected amount of additional revenue?
That's what this budget is based on.
Correct. Without a tax increase.
Which would cover the school construction, maybe.
But we would still need to go back through and.
There's some highlighted areas?
Yes.
To be able to get a balanced budget.
Correct.
How far are we off on that?
But we still won't know the, and the part of it, the part that we won't know today is what, if we did the apple outlay of the trucks and ambulance and those types of trash trucks, tire trucks, what that would. That's gonna be the one denominator that we're not.
They're gonna cause some wrinkles.
That's not.
The payment on page twenty-two, two hundred eighty-three thousand, that's for the HVAC.
Okay.
The one, the payment that's at the end, the hundred sixty-seven thousand, that's for the seven and a half million.
Potentially double that is what we'd end up for the whole budget.
Of course, that report is recommended that, you know, while interest rates are so low that we.
Want to.
Lumpen everything together and refinance and saving some money.
See, one thing I've been thinking about, of course, I know we've applied, we've already applied for the literary loan, right? And that's at four percent, state hasn't dropped it.
Three.
Three.
But they're talking, we might be better off not using that.
Well, that's what I was getting at, see, even though we're on that, if, if we're getting two point something, then we.
That other, we got one point nine seven, so.
So why else, you know, I'm saying, why stick with literary loan, let's, let go with the full boat if we go that route and forget the literary loan.
Well, that was what they were hoping you all would do today or last night, go ahead and put that out so we can get.
What?
Paper proposals to see where we are.
One thing that may happen as well is that, you know, with our economic development project and school projects, you know, if the economy slows, I talked to some. Commercial builders, a few that are really concerned that that, their business may dry up in the next little bit, so, you know, there's some potential, maybe there's some savings.
Yep, if we wait.
I talked to my brother-in-law most, you know, just from a, he's electing contracting, he's, he said, yeah, they've got contracts right now, what, six months from now?
We saw some of that back in, when, when we hit the downturn and everything in oh seven, oh eight, you know, projected, some of the projected contracting costs actually went down because they were spending time to work.
Actually, right now, you know, the heating and air contract, we had trouble getting bids, maybe this will.
Because they were covered up.
Yeah.
Now.
Seriously doubt there's many people going to bid in the next three months.
But I, 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 I don't have a problem, I'm looking at it, but the point he made, i- is there some way we can get some kind of projections on these, uh. You know, fire truck, ambulance, that kind of stuff to include in it, just.
Absolutely.
And see what the whole package deal does and see if it does save us some.
We have gotten those. Those ballpark numbers just from the last one that we did, you know. We had gotten those, uh, those ballpark numbers just from the last one that we did, you know, last year. Six hundred fifty thousand, that what it was.
I guess this one will be more.
Well, yeah.
Fire trucks, about five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
You know, it was sixty.
Sixty thousand. Right at five hundred.
There's a, there's a lot of empty space up above.
Yep.
Where we had things highlighted in yellow and green.
Yep.
Yeah, I was kinda shocked there.
So we have to look at that, yes.
I was supposed to say, yes, alcohol gloves.
Yeah, I expected to be that close.
Uh, and I just saw a problem.
And this is predicated on sixty cent, right?
That was the one I was trying to copy in here and, and.
It, it doesn't include half of the payment that we would have on that.
That was Ian's, that's up on me.
Right there. Pick up, right there, that wasn't.
Yeah, it is, it's part of it. Uh, let me go back and work it for us.
Well, but that mon, that, it's just down a lot.
Yeah, but.
It doesn't, the formula doesn't.
That formula's.
Computer.
Yeah, the formula will not. Well, it will not continue.
Correct.
And I think, if I'm understanding right, two things, the main thing that we need to decide today is just how we're gonna go about, like, what's our plan going forward as far as, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna try to push for a budget here soon? Are we gonna push it off, or are we?
If you want that report, go ahead and set out the bids.
I say yes, and that before definitely.
Talking about gonna offer bid on the financing.
Refinance.
Refinancing.
Refinance and then for the other, for the other seven million.
Yeah, because, I mean, in the end, we, if for some reason it comes back screwy, I mean, we can reject the, we don't.
I'm also seeing what's out there.
But they're thinking if we put it all together, it'll get a much better rate.
That might help.
Yeah, but you know, you're.
And I'm not crazy about a lot of collateral, if we don't have to. Have we, now, will this, this seven point two be included in that?
They were gonna look at that too, to see if it helped any.
Yeah, well, the reason I was gonna say, uh, still only get that school.
Yeah.
I don't like it either.
I mean, I understand it helps to get, get a better rate at the time, but I guess I'm still in the old mode that the county government ought to be trustworthy enough to pay a bill.
Indeed.
They, they were gonna look at it in three ways, just the seven million that we haven't done, doing all of the fourteen have and then other potential refinancing that we might do on other ones, they were gonna look at those three ways.
Yeah, I, I've thought about this from a county, you know, from a government standpoint, from our standpoint, same way that, I've had a few businesses contacting me that are, that are looking at this from a standpoint of, we're in trouble, this, this could really hurt us. But this could be an opportunity if we, just, you know, from a business standpoint, how do we make, how do we make the most of any situation, whatever meets us, you know? And I think that's what you always have to be thinking of. So I've tried to think about that, you know, from this standpoint, of how do we, from a taxpayer's standpoint, how do we, how do we help people? And on the flip side, how do we get the best deal we can for taxpayers on whatever we're doing? And, and there may be some opportunity there, I don't matter, I'm not.
Well, I've got some questions and things after we get out of the budget, but I did bring one more thing with that.
So where are we on a budget hearing, on a public hearing?
They put it off.
And how do we know when we can put it off to? I mean, what's our magic date?
It depends on the, I guess, the two factors, depends on when we put off the day of collections and what we're gonna do tax rate wise. Is that, is that, basically, for me, that's what I'm looking at, and I don't think we're ready to set a tax rate. But we could project out, you know, we could say we're, instead of June fifth, we're gonna set a June, I mean, August, whatever.
Cause once you set that date, then you backtrack to working on that.
Correct.
Right. Depending on what you're gonna do tax rate, then that kicks in, cause even if, even though it's in the new budget year, if that thirty day, if we're raising taxes with the reassessment, that thirty day after.
If you held your public hearing in the middle of June, then you'd have to advertise on middle of May.
Correct.
Right.
But by pushing it back to August, you could pass your tax rate and your budget at the same time.
Yeah.
Which would be, at least at that point, you would.
Well, no, we have to, we have to have an approved budget before June thirtieth.
Right, but if you push the tax rate back to August fifth, then you'd be, you could approve both of them at the same time.
Well, but see.
Because they, they said, uh, April twenty-fifth is when they had to have a number for the.
June fifth.
June fifth, so I'm just looking, that's about five weeks.
Oh, okay.
So five weeks from the end of, of, um.
Correct.
August.
Of the end of June would be.
Middle of June, right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's, in my mind, I was thinking, if we tried to advertise for public hearing in June, in the middle of June, then that would put us in the time frame to get it, you know, and all this.
Right.
And we could then pass the budget and the tax rate at the same time, or in the same place at the same time.
Right.
Because my fear is, you know, if we try to push a tax rate now and a budget in June, that'd be so much to change in between, I don't really need to know
Right.
how to balance that.
And that would give us more time to, that'd give them more time to give us more numbers, and that will ease the burden on the citizens.
Yeah.
Like I said, if Steve come back and, and, and says, yes, you can waive penalties and interest, then I would look at leaving the, the payment at June fifth and waive penalties and interest after, and then that puts it to the citizen. That way, as Linda said, the ones that can can go ahead and.
Yep.
Pay, and we'd ask them to pay if they would, but if they chose not to, then there's no penalty and interest.
Correct.
If you had your hearing on June twenty-third, which is your regular meeting day, and then that would give you, you have to wait seven days to approve the tax rate and everything, that would be right at June thirtieth.
Yeah, then we could have a budget meeting to.
You'd have the public hearing when?
June twenty-third.
And they give you seven days and still be within the month of June.
I don't wanna put us in a financial bind by the way, but I do, I do feel like.
This is such uncharted waters.
Well, and, and another month of this will tell us if it's gonna drag on or if it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, right now, I feel like I really have no clue. You know, if a month from now, everything's back to normal, it'll have some impact, but it's not gonna have nearly the impact that it would.
It's gonna take a while to come back.
Not to devastating impact it has the potential.
But I think, I think there's some Floyd businesses that, when it comes back, are gonna boom, because I honestly think there's gonna be a, I think you mentioned earlier, you know, there's gonna be a push to buy local and to, you know, support people that have been hurt by it, and so, I mean, I think that there's a potential to have a boom, but I have no idea what that would be, that's gonna be.
I'll do it, so, I'll turn around this way and stretch, and who leaves it on this side?
For me, just, um, just listening and, and reading and watching trends, I mean, um, there are so many people that have traveled during this period that was, shall we say, undocumented. And the, uh, that traveling is gonna cause us to, I mean, what happened in Radford just yesterday, so.
Well, I was thinking about it last night after I got home, think of this board and the committees we're involved in outside of this county, and how many people we've been around that we have no idea if they or a family member has traveled.
Right.
I like some of that.
I mean, it, it, we don't know.
Our lives are so intersected that it's just.
Yep.
Even when you're trying not to, you're, you're coming contact with so many people, so, but.
I mean.
You said June twenty-second, May?
Third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
What day is that?
It's your regular board meeting day.
Regular board meeting.
Night.
Night meeting. All right. And seven days from that would be the thirtieth, which would be a Tuesday as well.
Yes.
Between now and next state, we need to call this and type something with plan, I mean, there's so many things up there.
So you would have to start advertising, I made the twenty-third again.
Which is about two months from now.
Actually, it would be the twenty-first would be the Thursday.
Right, so that's a little under two months from now.
I've, I've just got, my one hope is that warm weather hurts this thing.
That's really, I've been praying for sunshine, and I read today where it says, yeah, yeah, sunshine's the best thing to, you know, um.
I mean, I'm not a doctor, I know nothing about it, but I just.
And I don't think they know.
Yeah, and that's part of the problem.
That's part of the problem, yeah.
Cause all the models are, or, the models are wrong just because we don't know.
They don't know.
They don't know, it's not their fault.
They're modifying them every day.
Go back to what we was talking about, well, all going, traveling and all this other stuff, all right, June, they try to zero in, find out that one person started, which I'm likely to do that, but anyway, they go back to January when they called to one guy coming in that tested positive for.
In Seattle.
And they started. Whatever it's. Yeah, but anyway, they caught him and they tested, and he, how many before him came in that had already had it, got over it, and was still contagious that just passed on through them out, you know?
I think there's, I'm told, uh, people that have already had it, they don't even.
Exactly, so, who knows?
That was treated for a severe case of the flu or a severe, a severe case of bronchitis.
You know, I missed a meeting, and I, I had the exact symptoms, fever, couldn't, I couldn't breathe, I mean, that was in February, I'm glad I didn't come to a meeting.
Right.
I was fortunate. I said it last night.
That was six, seven weeks ago, so hopefully, but, but, but I don't know, they didn't touch me for anything while I went to the doctor.
So.
Well, when I went, the stethoscope touched me, but that was it.
So if what I'm saying is true, how, how close are we to that peak? You know?
That's right unknown.
It's the unknown, see, that's, that's, the more they test, the higher it's gonna go, that's a given.
Right.
You know, but where is that gonna stop at? And I, I feel like it, the speed they are testing now, you know, is.
We'll have a better comprehension.
Right, yeah.
In the next year.
And, and for me, the peak is, a- a- and I understand what you're saying, it's not necessarily the number of cases, it's the number of mittens in hospitals by the people, that, that's, that's the.
From what I heard this morning, that's what's concerning them now, is the number of people that's gonna be admitted to the hospital in the next month that's gonna blow out the hospital, you know, concerning that.
Cause eighty percent of people are good, so there's some.
Correct.
And see, they're setting up facilities around hospitals now, and plans, FEMA's plans bring in more, and, uh, but, but they don't know what they're gonna need yet.
How about, uh, do you all wanna meet anymore before your next regular meeting, or had you rather, us, go ahead and get, you know, what you've done today, get it in a file form and send it to you so you can.
If you could, if you could do print copy, print copy.
Updated copy.
You know, that way we won't be rushing her so bad and we can check everything.
Updated hard copy.
If everyone's fine with the June timeline.
I, I, I really am.
I think that's a good plan.
We've done pushed our staff, or we have, and it's, I always done overloaded our staff.
That's what I was gonna say, I, I think that the next couple of weeks, y'all are, you know.
So you wanna just.
Y'all need to concentrate on what's going on, and I have all this budget stuff on top of me too.
So you wanna just wait till your next regular meeting to talk some more, so, to make that afternoon work more?
And I think, you know, we set an example of not having a bunch of meetings while it's April the fourteenth.
Yes, okay, that way we can look back overall, make sure we get the formulas right and.
And.
Yeah.
Budget in the afternoon.
Cause we'll need to, you know, we'll need to have a pretty good idea of what numbers we need by, that'll give us some months to work on that.
We can get some answers to some of the other questions that you had. Okay.
Are we gonna put off the school discussion till, like, the meeting with the school till done too, probably?
Whatever you all would like to do.
I think given this uncertainty, that's a wise move.
Perhaps, if, if they could, of course, I don't know how that would work, could they get us a copy of their, the plans and stuff and have it here in the office for, if we chose to come in and just sit down with, you know, and look at it, I get it.
Today, it's up on their website.
You might speed things up a little.
Even if they had a presentation they wanted to, they could video a presentation and send it to us electronically, a video that we could watch.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
I don't know if I did or not, but I was, I was just thinking that.
Short read.
That way, you know, we could come in, maybe sit down with you and look at it, and, cause, you know, I guess, Dr. Weaver's kinda kept you up today on most of it, so, then you could probably answer most questions each of us should have individually, any we couldn't, then, well, any we couldn't, then you could get an answer for where.
I, I would be interested too, from, just from the engineering firm, that, um, what their, Thomas mentioned, what their thoughts are on the, uh, projects, you know, over the next year or two, if they think this will have an impact to lower costs, or, you know, that, I'm sure they have a concept of what's gonna.
And we have a, I don't know, we have a map, they're asking, I don't wanna set that out.
Yeah.
Is it in the ballpark? But, but just long as it's in the ballpark, if you.
Yeah, if they had just had a tape on what they think, they're probably like the rest of us don't know, but.
Their best guess.
They've got their hands on the.
Yeah. Hands in the architecture. Weeks ago, maybe. They're ready, they're all in.
I mean, our own new business, I think, Terry said something about, yeah.
Well, there's one thing I've been thinking about, and I believe I mentioned with Terry, given the situation and stuff with school closing and everything else, uh, I, 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 I would definitely like to see the lunch and breakfast program the schools are doing continue. And I was just wondering if they had sufficient funds to continue that, or how long? And there's a lot of organizations feeding a lot of people over the county at this time, and I don't know what shape they're in. But that might be one way we could help our citizens, or at least some of them. Could, could, could we, would it be worth checking into to see if we could aid any of them?
I'd say, you know, some of them is teetering on the edge right now, and any way we can help them, we can really help.
Well, from what, the numbers I'm seeing, uh, I know two groups are feeding over a hundred forty people every day. And that's besides what the schools are doing. And I, I just think it'd be something that we ought to look into.
Yep.
If, if, if we can aid them to continue doing that, especially, at least during this emergency.
You're talking about budgets like plenty?
Yeah, some of the ones established ones, and, and, that I know are having, like you said, there's some of them that's getting down very bad.
I saw plenty said they had reached, uh, they had new records of amounts of people.
Yeah, on Monday, yesterday.
Was it seventy-three or?
Something like that, yeah.
One of them had seventy-three and one of them had seventy-one, and, I mean, I think it's great that the community's stepping up. I think if we can help support that.
Yeah.
They're feeding people that need to be fed.
Yep.
Just something to feed.
Oh, absolutely.
Are you thinking about bringing that back to our next meeting, or?
Well, if, if the county administrator could look at it, um, then, uh, get us the information, uh, under the new structure, so you could talk to each one of us and see what we've thought about it, and then move forward if, if, if.
I mean, I think it's important, but.
Absolutely.
One other thing I thought about too is just, well, this comes from talking to people in the food chain, just of the beef chain, is, um, the fear of what happens if somebody. the fear of what happens if some of these big packing plants or, or facilities are hit by this and have to shut down, and what, how that would impact our food chain.
Does it really go?
I think people employed are more resourceful than other areas, but it could, you know, a lot of your grocery stores don't keep, I mean, they might keep a week's supplies, but I mean, and I'm sure they've had on them.
I've already had people come and say, hey, you wanna sell any more beef this year?
Oh, I, my phone is wrong.
Yeah, because they just never gave us store, and we wanna know where it's coming from, you know, you know, it's already hurt both price, you know.
Stores are limiting, even here, the amount of meat you can buy.
So I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is there, but, you know, I've had a couple people actually reach out to me and say, um, what's the plan if we get in a situation where some of our grocery stores don't have anything on the shelf? You know, the county considering that, and, you know, if we went a week or two without fruit at all, what, what would happen, you know?
And I don't know what we could do, but it, it, it would be worth looking into to see what our options are.
I think it'd be worthwhile just even calling the, the, you know, few supermarkets we have here and just saying, you know, what, what's your, what are y'all, what are y'all hearing, you know? Because I've heard from people within the beef chain, up the line, you know, the theaters and different people that, out west, but I don't know, you know, there's so many other things, maybe there's plenty of canned green beans on the shelf, and it don't matter. But, um, it does, it does worry me a little bit, because I think that, I worry about Floyd, but also worry about, what happens running for now, they'd be coming up the mountain.
Oh, yeah.
If you're watching Facebook, cow out on the road, it would be out on the road gone.
Hanging from a tree.
That was part A. Part B, I wanted to bring up specifically, the town has structured a, a way for, on the meal tax and transit occupancy. Do we need to parallel that to keep things even with our people outside of the town?
Talking about delaying it?
Yeah, they still have to file their paperwork on town, but it's been delayed, I think, what, what did they delay?
Twenty days, wasn't it?
Yeah, and the way they've got it set up is that, like.
Right.
I think, I think in.
He said we couldn't do that.
Yeah, we're waiting on Steve's.
I don't, I still don't know how we can legally.
We can't delay the payments.
He said.
I don't know how the town can do that.
That's what he did.
It's completely withholding.
Yeah, but they're, they're town charter, and they're under thirty-five hundred people.
They can do whatever they want.
But it's with, it's just like, if I went out and, if I withheld an employee's social security, that's.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, that's a.
It's embezzlement.
That's embezzlement from the state, and I don't know how you could, I don't know how the town can, I mean, not so.
Well, the town, I don't think it's saying that they can do that, they're just saying, as far as what's paid, what they do with it's up to each individual business. But I think what they're saying is, you don't have to pay it. I don't think the town's recognized that how they.
I guess, I guess the reason that I don't understand it, it's not a tax on the business, it's a tax on the customer.
Correct.
The customer's paid in, it just, the business just transfers it to us, it's not, it's never their money, never in, through the whole county system, it's never their money, so I don't get how that could.
I just brought it up again, because I felt like I needed to.
I know Plansburgh and Christianburg, right, both done that also, but not with how they can.
Right, because they can.
I mean, I'd be open to it, I just wanna be really careful legally, that, you know, that we don't get businesses in trouble, you know, I don't want some businesses, that's a dangerous path to go.
Using that theory, they'll, they'll zero it out.
Maybe we could do. You, you have to appropriate the money back to them, I think, wouldn't you?
No, I'm saying.
It's not their money, they've collected it from.
Our, our.
They would have to pay, but from, from X number a day forward, then it would be zeroed out, then we'd lose the revenue totally.
But then you just wouldn't be charging customers.
That's what I mean.
They don't have any customers to charge.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just saying that.
Right.
They wouldn't gain anything.
I mean, the customers wouldn't pay.
Because they're not paying anything.
Yeah, like, right now, we're not gonna collect any meal tax this morning, or from, like, next month for this current.
It's gonna be good.
It's gonna be nothing.
It's gonna run in the same way.
Yeah.
Well, the takeouts, I have, but it's gonna be.
It's gonna be rolling.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just trying to look at some way to balance equalize it, now I know what he said, that it looks like there ought to be some way we can, we can aid somewhere there.
It was sharp to me when he said that.
Yeah.
I mean, I just know from cases from the, from the county of people that have not done the withholding correctly, and used it for their own purposes, that that is a bad, bad situation, buddy. Because it's technically not yours, so it's.
That's one of Sam's.
I mean, it's just, you say that in those.
You know, I could lose his one.
That's the one tax you do pay on time, because it's, you know, it's like sales tax, but pay it, you better pay it.
Even if you don't collect anything, you gotta file it if you don't.
I want it.
You gotta pay a penalty.
Pay, yes, it's a penalty, and I figured better, I don't have sole privacy up there, but I didn't do nothing this month, well, you still gotta file it.
Well, I understood, you, you file your state taxes on time, but you, there's a delay in paying it, not worried about removing penalties and interest though.
Right.
So they're, they've set, the state itself set a system up where it's encouraged you to wait to pay it, but you're, then they're gonna charge you to do it.
For doing it.
And see, that's, I, I don't wanna get county or anybody in trouble, I'm just still trying to process some way we can help those businesses outside of the bank.
Yeah, I mean.
And I think that's what the E D A and their staff are trying to do, to keep up with things, you know, from the Small Business Administration, those types of things.
And a lot of, I know they're gonna have small business loans, but that's.
Some people don't wanna get along.
Yeah.
Especially when they're unsure of how the economy's gonna be going forward, you might not be able to pay the loan.
Because if, if they end up going belly up, they're still gonna be responsible for paying that on the back, you know? That's why I was looking, you know, I thought, why don't they set some stuff up in grants, just straight out grants?
Exactly.
Have some, have some qualifying factors.
They are talking about that, but nothing's been approved.
Right.
Right, but that's, that's the way you do it.
That's all I want, stir no more, I stirred enough.
Good question, so, I mean, it's something we've really gotta be thinking about, how can we help our local businesses, because some of these people are just, you know, they're, they're not getting rich already.
No, and this is.
Year and spring's one of the busiest seasons.
Yep, spring and summer.
And, and it's not just the tourism businesses, it's not, it's.
No, it's everybody, yeah.
I'm just giving you an example, my wife, her, her busiest month is usually May, weddings, and you don't plan, you don't wait till two weeks before a wedding is canceled, so, you know, it's. All those people are getting ready to.
Another thing.
That chateau, that's all these businesses.
Another thing that factors into it besides the numbers is the sheer, I've, I've kept myself, my family away from it, right? I don't wanna be going into the situation, you know, so they're not going.
Yep.
And it's gonna hit all industries, it's gonna hit construction, it's gonna hit all of them.
Yeah, I don't want somebody coming to my house, putting up this storm, where they've been the last night.
She was setting up a new business and this hit, and now, gone. Um, but back to staff, I'm gonna say, please, 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 don't be calling in wanting updates, because Kevin and Terry has given every update that they give, and Kevin is wore to a frazzle, I mean, nobody knows what that means.
Yep.
And, uh, so we don't need to be calling in wanting updates, because if you need them, you know, C D C, the Department of Health, our website, you'll know everything we know. And we'll just call you, you know?
I'll send, I'll send updates to all, as I can.
And.
You know, some of our tele, phone calls, or whatever you're gonna call it, or electronic calls, some of the stuff that we're hearing, as emergency director of emergency services and county administrator, we can't talk. You know, it's, it's confidential, and it's, it's, um, up to Denver releasing, not us, you know, they're just keeping us abreast of stuff that's happening. So, you know, like I say, poor Kevin's wore to a frazzle, I mean, he's worn to death, and I know Cindy and Terry's been busy, 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 so, uh.
And, and where we can, I know some, a lot of it we can't, or where we can, can we keep the town up on?
Yeah, we have to.
And I thought, I, I just, I had to say that, forgive me.
We have.
Just keep them up as much as we can too, and ask them to do the same thing on their side, but I, I feel like we have to.
What tickles me is some of the stuff that we get that we're supposed to be keeping confidential, you go to a business, and they already know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was on a phone conversation with a customer yesterday afternoon, and they already knew about the confirmed case in Radford, and it hadn't been released.
Right, yeah.
You know, and I said, oh, really, and, you know?
Yeah, that's what I. Yeah, it's just like.
Uh, they, they said, well, you know, there was a guy, and you were just talking about that case in Radford, and I said, well, I haven't heard that yet, but, you know.
Yeah, right. Yeah, crazy.
I heard it, and.
Crazy.
Yeah, but, um, but, um.
Now that they shut the hair shop and barber shops down, they may call them down.
They just. You know, that was one thing the governor said, that I thought was sort of hypocritical, and that's, at a point, he was talking about, this was gonna cause a lot of suicides, alcoholism, everything.
Delivering cords to stay out.
Central businesses he left over, open was the ABC store.
Well, then, well, crime will go up over them withdrawals, and, so.
Well, I know.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I've heard back from Dr. Wheeler about the meals, he says, if we get reimbursed, which we have a federal waiver, waiver for emergency feeding approved, we will have enough money. We are counting on the reimbursement, but now we may have to look at other ways within our current budget to bridge the gap, we're working on that.
Okay.
We're trying to do our part, uh, we're meeting the needs of our students and staff in a very lean manner.
Right.
Well, that's good, and now that we know that, if, if, just my opinion, if they're slow on getting the reimbursements, or, I think we could step up and help and answer them too, if we had to.
Yeah.
Feed their kids. Feed them.
Well.
And our elderly.
Well, the, many of these children, that's.
The only meal they get.
You'd be surprised if that's the only meal they get.
I'm not surprised.
There's nothing else, I'll take a motion of adjournment April fourteenth at eight thirty. Some need.
Second.
We'll call the road, we'll just do a consensus.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all.